Oops, have not even done the.
Alright, we already.
I have not been able to do the council too well. I haven't been able to zoom out the council chambers, but we can do that when we later.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Welcome. It is Monday, June sixteenth at six P M. And we'll now open the study session. We have a distinguished guest from Greater Vancouver Chamber here. So yeah, well, why don't you introduce yourselves? And so were you and on the credit.
Thank you for that. That's the.
Make sure you're in the microphone.
That's the kindest introduction I've ever owned. Good evening. My name is John McDonald. I'm the President and CEO of the Greater Vancouver Chamber. And this is Janet Kevsky. Jan is our chief operating officer. When we first contacted the mayor, it was to come and talk with us. We were launching in battlegrounds. And then it dawned on me that between the last time we were in front of the council and tonight, a majority of the council hadn't really heard about the Greater Vancouver Chamber from us. And so we thought we could start this evening with a little bit of context in terms of who we are and how we need to view the Chamber for battleground. And then we'll, we brought some very specific information about the size of the business community. We'll be able to talk about how many members are currently in the Greater Vancouver Chamber in battleground. And then we'll conclude with a discussion about what was on with the executive dialogue. So we've invited owners and executives from businesses to meet with us on a regular basis. And we'll get into that. I think each of you has seen the charter. I'm not sure, may or will this be detailed. With that, I'll just kind of jump right in. In two thousand seventeen, we were contacted by the then Chair of the Board of the Battleground Chamber of Commerce, Danny Waters, for the students in the Battleground Schools. And they wanted to have a conversation about how the Greater Vancouver Chamber might support the Chamber here in battleground. And we were in conversation for it seemed like most of two thousand seventeen, the Battle Ground Bell, what that might look like. And we actually started operating the monthly luncheons that the Battleground Chamber sponsor for years. And finally, the decision of the board was, you know, we're, we're done. It's, it's too much for us. I mean, these are all carefully deployed people trying to run the chamber. In the four years prior to our engagement in two thousand seventeen, there had been five different paid executives at Battleground Chamber. And last paid executive, they were just having a hard time paying. Like many small community chambers of commerce, Battleground was focused on artists' aids as a social revenue, and golf tournament, and the sold fireworks. And that literally consumed the executive pressure, the ringless. So there was very little going on in terms of helping to sustain and make vital the business community itself. So I've been in the chamber business now for ten years, having spent most of my career in marketing, advertising, sales, and business. One of the first things I learned when I joined the chamber was that if you've seen one chamber, you've seen one chamber. Every community's Chamber of Commerce is literally a reflection of the community they serve. And so they take on different responsibilities and initiatives based on their work chamber. In the city of Vancouver, we have a host of organizations that run community festivals, that sponsor parades, that sell fireworks, they got a design of food and yet. And so we've had the luxury at the Greater Vancouver Chamber of paying business, this is chamber. Right? So our mission is to help sustain and create a vital business community so that we're running jobs and servicing all of the employees of employers in our. That was a huge part of the conversation that the Vancouver Chamber had with Battleground Chamber in terms of merging. We made it pretty clear that we were having to take on the businesses. And all of them eventually became members of all of them. Most of the paid dues to the Battleground Chamber became members of the Greater Vancouver Chamber until it came time to renew, and then they were renewed or not. But we, we made it pretty clear that harvest days wasn't going to be something that we would be managing going forward. When we already had vaults on them and would use some of the fireworks. So as you might imagine, a number of the board were very concerned about what we have to talk about in harvest days. So we actually assisted in the creation of the Battleground Festival Committee. That's what it's called, association. And help them establish three in place so that they could actually take care of that because it does help with the depth. It's a defining part of the city of battleground. You know, it's been a celebration in the summer in battleground. I've been in Manhattan for fifty years, so I mean, I'm spending a lot of time in downtown Manhattan. So we negotiated that transition. And when we assumed members of Battleground Chamber, there were roughly a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty, the most many members at that time. About eighty of those who are already members of Greater Vancouver. And so it wasn't, wasn't huge lift. And so we have since two thousand eighteen, when we really took place. And we've just included Battlegrounds, you know, the, and all of the initiatives that we had in terms of workshops and business events. For example, one of our annual events is business and leadership awards. Former, former Mayor Paul Johnson actually was recognized as the citizen of you.
Spokesperson, politician.
Yes, it was the civil sort of, and that was a celebration along with the rest of the awards that we awarded that year. We want to say hello to the Battleground communities. So we actually have a number of our activities up here and we manage this community. So I think at this point, I'll hand off to Janet, and she'll go through a little bit more specifics on what exactly the that, excuse me, Greater Vancouver Chamber offers to this community.
Alright. Good name. Am I doing that?
That is me.
That's you. Okay.
You should have control of the slides.
Dang it. Sorry, people. We're having problems with things.
We have a presentation started. Fine.
Okay, totally fine. I'm going to send this to y'all because that's really hard to read. Our why, John, John mentioned it. It is to support businesses. And we want to make sure businesses have a voice. The professionals within the organization have a voice and collectively, not just within the city, but within the county, that, that we have a voice. I'll go on to the next one. I wanted to make sure you had a, our Board of Directors. Again, we'll, if, if, if we can send this slide deck so you can get, take a closer look. One of the things that we do with our Board of Directors is we make sure to populate it with people from around, around the region. We have two of them that are located here in battleground, Steve Neamy, Tradesman Electric, and Mandy Hendricks with Palm Beach Tan. And then we have a couple that have services that, that span the region as well. But on our board is also different industry sectors that are represented as well, so that we have small business, nonprofit, large business, the trades, manufacturing, retail, service providers, you name it. So you can go. This is the Greater Vancouver Chamber staff. So we're a staff of eleven, twelve, if you count Moka Bean there. One of the things that we look at when we're in different regions, the stars are where those of us who live here in district. So want to make sure that people understood that we have people that do vote here. We have people that live here, some across the street, but battleground is a very important part for us. Next. The pillars of focus. So we spend a good amount of time on our advocacy at the Greater Vancouver Chamber, especially now. And that's both local, regional, and state level, and sometimes depending on the topic and on the federal level. We want to make sure that we have an inclusive business community. We have different leadership programs that we focus on so that we can help maintain and secure the leadership throughout the different levels at the organizations. We are all about community and providing business resources and education. So we start way back when, when we went through the COVID nineteen pandemic. This is a number that we, we like to see. We distributed five point three million dollars in COVID grants. Three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy went directly to battle car on businesses, the brick and mortars that were retail restaurants and childcare providers. So for us, really important to get out into the community and make sure that they too had access to the grants that were being distributed across the county. So three, three twelve actually pretty much aligns the percentage wise with all the, the number of companies throughout the county. So it was good to stay within that range. Next. We have newsletters that we support. I know you all share our information. We share your information. For us, it's been fantastic being able to get information out to the community because we're going to be showing some information that will walk you through how many people are coming into battleground, not just for shopping and their services, but also to, to work at places that are located here in battleground. So making sure we have that reach to the community is, is important to us. So we have professionals that sit in everywhere from Clark P U D down, down into Portland. They are either calling this home, or they're coming up here to shop or work and then exiting either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day. Programs and events. So again, this is John had already mentioned, and for the sake of time, I'll, I'll continue. But we do enjoy our events up here. So we've, we've had quite a few of our different events, leadership events, our awards events, workshops, trainings, all really great. And if you haven't been to the foundry as the bottom right, it's pretty incredible. Pretty incredible. We were the first event that they were able to have there with our partnership, and we were able to bring a lot of awareness to something that a lot of even battleground citizens don't know exists. So it's pretty cool. We do have a spend it local program. It's a local currency program. If you're not familiar with it, this is a program that the Greater Vancouver Chamber stood up for the region, and it is to provide local currencies to gift, to reward. We primarily target our corporations that are all around town, asking them to purchase gift certificates in lieu of Starbucks or other gift cards that they might find a little bit easier to gift local so that there's over seventy places that people can shop and dine with and make that decision. So it's been a very incredible program for us, and it's brought in a lot of new consumers and certificates to merchants that otherwise wouldn't have seen some of the business. So our nonprofits and corporations currently purchase gift certificates, and, and we can see the redemptions happening every single day. When we look at this program, so right now we have over two hundred thousand dollars. It's already been spent and spent at the local merchants. We have about eighty thousand, a little over eighty thousand right now, sitting in people's pockets that are ready to, to, to spend. So they could be in junk doors as well, like a lot of our gift cards are. But we encourage people to spend at local places and choose their place. You have one of the hotspots for us, which is space age fuel. Seems to be a very big redeemer. So nationally, it's car washes, coffee shops, bars, and and steakhouses tend to be the biggest redeemers nationally. But when we look at the gift certificates, on that average, thirty nine percent above that gift certificate value is what's spent. So people go in, they spend their certificate, but then they, on average, spend thirty nine percent more, and that's what we like to see. And we do collect those numbers from, from our merchants. So how much did you spend? How much did you redeem for? So we can get an idea for, one, where the corporation is, is giving. So Clark Public Utilities, as an example, purchased ten thousand dollars to give twenty five dollar gift certificates to each one of their staff during Electric Day. You light us up kind of thing with their employees, and we could see where they went and spent them. And so that's a downtown headquarters and some in orchards, but they spent them from Waschugle up to La Centre and everywhere in between. So it's nice to see that people are going home and spending on where, where they live or where they recreate. The WorkSafe program is a program we'll touch on briefly. This one seems to be a mystery to a lot of people. There are two states in the country that allow for our manufacturers to get workers' comp back. Usually, all of us businesses, we pay workers' comp and we say goodbye to it. We never see it again. That's just part of our dues of paying as an employer. The Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Vancouver Chamber, has a program that's allowed by the state of Washington because the state runs the workers' comp program that allows our manufacturers to actually join programs that are through specific organizations. One that's allowed is the greater, is Chambers of Commerce in like risk groups, and we provide management, a T P A, and this is something that we can go into a lot more detail in another session. It's definitely worth looking at. But we are able to give refunds back to our manufacturing sector for, in their workers' comp premium. So it's an amazing program that is to date giving back twelve million dollars in just refunds alone to Southwest Washington manufacturers. We average around sixty manufacturers. They do have to abide by certain lessons or certain requirements. They have to have a safe standards. They have to allow us in there to help them create a safe work, work environment. And because of that, they're able to have employees that walk in with ten toes and leave with ten toes. And we give a refund and make sure that the risk pool allows us to, to give a refund. So we have a refund that's coming that we just received this month that will be hitting in the next two months to our manufacturers. So right now, if you're a manufacturer and you can say battleground or Clark County is a great place to set up your manufacturing plant, we don't offer a lot of incentives in the state. But what we do offer is an opportunity to be a part of a workers' compensation program that can give you sometimes even more money than you would an incentive by the state. So it's a program that we'd love to give more detail on, but manufacturers, it's technical and has a technical understanding. A lot of people work with their safety teams. We want to get the information out to more manufacturers so that they can participate. But you do have a handful of manufacturers here in, in battleground that take advantage of it. Wolf being one of them that comes to mind. Thanks. The, this is an example of what can also happen. So you're part of a workers' compensation program through the Greater Vancouver Chamber. We call it the retrospective rating program. And so you can get that refund. That refund is amazing, right? We want people to, to have safe environments to refund. But another side benefit in addition to this is you have a safe work environment and you're part of a plan. You have, we all pay what's called an experience factor. Are my experience factor in a manufacturing plant or a construction roofer a lot higher than a desk office worker, right? Because there's a lot more risk. So when you're part of a plan and you tell L and I that you're part of a plan like the chamber and you have safety inspections, your experience factor goes down, and that experience factor is what you get premium rates on. So if you have an experience factor of one point five, that's high. One, we won't take you, but that's high. If we can help you bring that down, that could equal twenty five, thirty thousand, hundreds of thousands of dollars for some of these organizations over five and ten years. So just by being a safe work environment and understanding how that experience factor works can help reduce premiums in the long run. So it's a win-win for, for organizations. We have a business pod training program. It's a technical assistance for businesses. This is where we really hit the ground running with micro enterprises and give them the understanding, the technical understanding, how to start a business, legal formation, taxation, you name it, marketing. We already have around twenty five battleground entrepreneurs and micro enterprises who have signed up and gone through this program. So a really great, successful program. And all these numbers that I give you based on battleground that does not include Brush Prairie or those that might be in the district that also have some overlap with areas. So these are just battleground numbers. These are the different offerings. We can move on, but it's all at a no cost. We, we provide it completely cost-free for entrepreneurs because usually costs. If you want to see at some point what they ask for during the intake forms, this is what they ask for when they sign up. These are the types of information that they tell us during their intake survey that they need more help with. A lot of legal formation, a lot of marketing, financial, how to build, how to, how to build out their, their inventory, et cetera. Our future workforce. So we do have a workforce development department. We work with the battleground school district. We work with all school districts and you K twelve, but we also work with Lower Columbia College. We work with Clark College, and we work with W S U Vancouver. And our department, actually, the lead of that department used to be the Battleground Executive Director before we merged. And we place internships with businesses all around Clark County, depending on what the student wants. We also have a number of areas that they're all, they're paid. So we know which university or which program is offering a hundred and twenty free hours, sixty paid, sixty collaborative effort with the business, which ones are paid by the employer, you name it. So there's a lot of organizations that offer opportunities for workforce. We want to make sure that we're in the ground level and we're building that pipeline for the future. So we come in like a Swiss Army knife, and we talk to a business, and if they can afford it, we can give them five other options of where they can get interns. If they can't afford it, we say that's not a problem. We're going to help you build a program so that you know how to manage an intern, and then we can find you paid internship opportunities through the programs, the schools, or even sometimes the cities. So a really great program, and you do have students here that, that take advantage of that, both through here and at the university level. Thanks. You all saw the civics be. We're just going to move on past the civics be because that was fun. They were here. Thank you for welcoming them. Great program. Civic pride is a huge one for us, and we're focusing a lot more on how to get education through to our professionals in the community. Lemonade Day, we just had it. If any of you went to it, thank you. If you didn't, I would highly encourage you to come back out because it was incredible. Three hundred and fifty kids opened up their own businesses from age six to sixteen years old. They actually had a, a sale of forty nine thousand, three hundred dollars. So they made forty nine thousand dollars last weekend at the, the weekend before at the junior market. So it's, it's really teaching them how to spend, save, and share, and have a good, a good opportunity for how do I take a passion, a product, and then I can turn it into a business. It's pretty cool. So getting them young. There's some of them. I'm gonna, you can move past this, but I would highly recommend taking a look at the album. These little tykes would blow your mind. So the battleground executive dialogue, we talked about that at the beginning, one of the reasons why we're here. Our goal is to make sure that business has a voice, but that you all so have a voice and a sounding board for the business community, whether you're vetting ideas, whether you're wanting to get more participation. We had our first executive dialogue, and I'll have John talk about this a little bit more. We held our first executive dialogue. If you want to go to the next slide. These were the CEOs that were, that were with us. That was one month ago, almost to the day, because we meet tomorrow morning for our second one. We sat with the CEOs here in battleground, and it was interesting, and it might not be as interesting to you. How many of them did not know each other? I was surprised. I was surprised because it, it's, it is, for the most part, a small community. But a lot of these different cross sectors were meeting each other for the first time, which was fantastic. So a lot of collaboration there. We, we just listened. We wanted to hear, what do you want? What do you want? What do you want when you come together with a group of business leaders? And a lot of them were talking about housing, obviously was a big one, workforce housing. We talked about workforce, workforce housing. What were the other? There were three main areas that they wanted to focus in on. Oh, transportation, definitely. Yeah, how to get those employers that are coming here based on, on your management plan, on where you want to see the growth. So interesting that I think having them here and talking about what they, what they would like to do with a group like this. We thought we would come in and say, okay, you guys are very busy, guys and gals. These, these individuals are very, very busy. We thought they would say, we, we've got to meet quarterly. We have to meet quarterly, but they all asked us, most of them, over half said that they needed to meet monthly because of their interest. So that, that was one of the surprises from that meeting. So we decided we will, at least for the short term, be meeting monthly so that we can, similar to what we're going to do here today, pass out, we're going to talk about some data, the stats. So when we're looking at information, not just here, but even in, in Vancouver, around the county, we want to make sure that when we're having discussions, especially with our policymakers at all levels, that we're having discussions based on data, not just based on feeling and what we hear. That's always good anecdotes are always really important, but when we look at what is really happening here. So if we want to build, if we want to build housing, can we? Is there, is there land? Is there vacancy? Those are the types of things we want to make sure we're all starting off when we're having discussions on workforce. What does that mean? Housing, can we build? Where can we build? How many can we build? What is the requirement to build? What numbers do we have to hit? And then what are the ages and the population of the people that are coming here, working here, living here? And are they commuting in or out? How far away are they living? So there's a lot of things that we want to make sure that our, our conversations, especially with the executive dialogue, but a lot of with our policymakers are, are rooted in data so that we have a better understanding and for those individuals have a better understanding. We did ask one question. There was a question we asked each one of them on their understanding, or how much of a voice have they or input have they provided in the Growth Management Act as it pertains to the city of battleground? Three hands went up and two of them from the same company. So I don't think that counts. One, two companies. So for us, that's, that's, we have some room for improvement there because these are individ, these are employers of, of pretty significant size and significant influence that haven't, haven't lent their voice to you all. And we feel that that's important. So we'll be taking that direction as well. Washington in the making. Do you want to go over Washington in the making?
So Washington in the Making two thousand forty is a economic development plan for the state of Washington that is driven by the people of the state of Washington as opposed to any specific political party or trade association. Through the Washington, excuse me, Association of Washington Business Institute, their nonprofit. Through the Washington, excuse me, Association of Washington Business Institute, their nonprofit arm. They surveyed 3,500 citizens in the state of Washington and asked them about how they feel about their community now, what they'd like to see, what they believe the community will look like in 15 years. And from that, we're able to develop initiatives around workforce, around education, around the recruiting of employers to the state. And the panel that you see on the right there of the screen are 36 vitals that exist for every county in the state of Washington. And that will live on the Greater Vancouver Chamber website. So that when you're in a policy conversation around housing or around education, you could actually go to our site and see what is going on in Clark County. We don't have it to the city level, maybe in the future, but we do have it for the county. So the Association of Washington Business and the Washington Roundtable wanted an economic development plan for the state of Washington that would be able to succeed any specific administration. So it's specifically a 15-year look. And regardless of whether or not our current governor, Governor Ferguson, last 12 years, like the last governor did, or he only has one term, this is a plan that can survive more than just a four-year term, if that's what a governor has. And kind of maintain the focus for that entire 15-year period. So we've been doing a lot of talking and we'd love to hear what questions you have. Janet's passing out some data on the number of businesses in the city. A couple of breaks on population, education. Total employees, total. Oh, commuting patterns and what have you. So.
Really briefly, because I know, I would assume you, you all have questions. When you're looking at the data for Battleground, this again is just for Battleground. The first thing we have Battleground employers. The next one is Battleground employees. So you can see what industries they're coming from, where they're working, what sectors. And so different industry sectors that might need a little bit more attention. Then you have those employees by age. And then the commute time, which I think is always interesting for our communities around Clark County, just understanding how far are people driving into work, right? So when we look at what is workforce housing, you can see how, how much housing you'd need if everybody wanted to work and live in, in the region. So people coming in upwards of 35, 40 minutes, some, some hour and a half. And then 72 people taking public transportation. So. The households, 2029 is, is the expected increase. So this aligns with the information I would assume that you all have. When you look at the 24 and 29 renter occupied units. So when we start talking about what, where people can live, what units, when we look at 262, it doesn't tell us why they're vacant, but they are vacant as of, as of the end of last year when this was reporting. So. But a lot of units that are in Battleground are, majority obviously are owner occupied, right? So you have a pretty large amount compared to other cities of owner occupied dwellings versus others that are renting. So yeah, interesting. I'll let you go through, through that. But educational, so you can see the educational attainment where they are. All, all good foundations for starting some, some discussions. And when we look at the Greater Vancouver Chamber for different types of programs, programmings that we put on, we, we can match that along with some of the analytics that we get from our, our technology to see if they, they seem to align. We use a lot of data and we're in the middle actually right now, tonight, 5 o'clock was our deadline to do a, a second round of data migration, but we're moving to a new website and a CRM. That's going to allow us even further, to further hone in on the demographics, the legislative districts of the employees within regions, but also be able to understand what their needs are, what the company's needs are, and then what the professionals' needs are within those companies and also where they reside. So we can map out even further where, where our professionals and businesses are throughout Clark County. We're going to be able to pull a lot of their, their backgrounds, not just to allow for grants and access, but be able to help educate our nonprofits and other community members who are doing work that can't afford oftentimes to upgrade databases. So we'll be able to, be able to track employees. Not surprising that employees migrate quite a bit and that's a challenge for organizations like Chambers. But a lot of these Chamber discussions that we're having both today and that we've had with our counterparts around the region, is very similar to what's happening around the country. So when we have questions regarding what is a Chamber, what are they doing? Small towns, large towns, medium type, regional. Chambers across the country are looking at this exact same conversation because it's, it's not unique. And a lot of what happens is the business community gets to a point in some communities where they're just starving for business support. And that's really one of the drivers for us to get here in front of you all. But also what drives us and our organization's mission is we need these businesses to survive. And without technical assistance and without the support, they don't survive. They can't survive two to three years, let alone from micro to startup. And right now nationally, we have the first decline in the history of the country in micro enterprises and entrepreneurs starting up businesses than we've ever seen in the last four years. And so we want to make sure that we're filling that pipeline of businesses that can go into our main streets, off our main streets, and also be able to identify those companies that are remote-based. The companies that are service providers that don't always have a voice. A lot of the voices that we have from brick and mortars tend to be louder than a lot of the organizations that are off the streets, but still need that help. We want to make sure that we're recognizing those individuals as well. So. And then the last sheet that you all have, I wanted to provide everybody a list of the different programming options that we provide. Battleground companies, Clark County companies. It's, I won't go through it. It's pretty extensive. But at your own time, if you ever have a question on it, whether it's nonprofit programming, corporate programming, small business programming, education or leadership, you name it. We would be more than happy to have coffee with you and explain it a little bit more in detail. Because it can be a lot to, to absorb, especially if, if you're new, if we're new faces to you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Where did you guys get this information? I mean.
No.
It's kind of feels that way.
No, 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 no. It's, it's, we can, we can send you the link to the economic database that we get it, get it from.
Okay. So I just don't understand.
Census.
Yeah, it's Census, ERSI. So we have information like that from economic development agencies for every city, including Scappus, Oregon, to Waschugle, to Battleground.
It just seems very specific. So.
It is.
I mean, I don't remember ever filling out anything with this much detail. So.
Well, a lot of it is your, your business license. It's garnered in a number of ways, but yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll send that, I'll send that link to you.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
These executive dialogue groups, have you been doing them? Is it rolling out everywhere right now or have you have more experience in other cities with them before?
Battleground is our first city to roll out the executive dialogues. It was an initiative Janet and I actually started talking about probably early last year. And we had a few other things going on, so we're finally getting on the road with it. And so our plan is that we will have, in addition to Battleground, we'll have one in Ridgefield, one in the Camas-Washugle area and potentially in East Vancouver. We think we have Vancouver pretty well covered just because of our, our roots there, but that's the plan right now.
Well, I know that when we talked about this originally, you know, and I'm sure other councillors have heard it too. It's hard for the city and businesses to not have one place to go to. So with that in mind, do you see the city, maybe it's the planning commission? Because you talked about GMA and how those businesses didn't feel heard, which is obviously something we need to rectify. So do you foresee a city seat on, in that executive group?
That's a, that's a great question. Not unlike the invitation that we extended to you for tomorrow morning. We see that more as an ad hoc.
Okay.
Participation rather than on the seat, excuse me, a seat on the actual group.
Okay.
So our, our role is to convene and then to resource based on the conversations that the business owners are having.
Understood. Yeah, sounds good. We don't want to waste anybody's time and on, on either side. So I appreciate that, the thoughtfulness behind that. But I really look forward to what comes out of this group as far as a collective voice of the business community in Battleground. I think it's something we've been missing for a while. As, and it's, it's not, it's tough, I think, for, for the city to not have one place to go to, to get that voice and to get that feedback. So I appreciate, I look forward to seeing this program come to fruition. Other questions, comments?
I had a question just to beg on to that actually on the executive dialogue. Is that open to? Like, can I attend that? I'm not a business owner currently. Is this, are you inviting people?
So, and you'll see in the charter, it is an invitation. So we've asked the initial folks that we invited to be thinking about, are there others that we should be inviting to the table? And if it's something that you wanted to participate in, the consideration would be the candor that we'll have during this conversation without an elected official there. And even though you're a business owner, I mean, I own a newspaper. And when I was the publisher of the newspaper, nobody wanted me at their meeting. And when I went to the Chamber, the same folks were convening and saying, oh, John, you have to be at the meeting. I said, I still own the newspaper. I'm just, so it's that kind of dynamic.
Know how that works.
And I think there's some, some thought to that because I think one of the reasons why the Battleground Chamber folded was it became a little not business focused. Let's just say, say it that way. So appreciate the thought behind that. Anybody else counsel? Yeah, and thank you for coming to the ribbon cutting today.
Absolutely.
It's nice to see you and your whole crew out there. So we appreciate the support we get from the Chamber and look forward to hearing what comes out of this executive dialogue and, and future endeavors.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
And you don't have to wait for us to come back. You can contact us anytime if there are questions and we'd be happy to get right back to you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. With that, I have 6:41 and we will end the study session this time. Thank you. Thank you.
I don't remember. I know you brought up all the work on it. All right. Good evening. It's June 16th. I have seven o'clock. Welcome to the Battleground City Council Regular Meeting. For those that are able, please stand for the pledge. Thank you. And whoever's doing roll tonight?
Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Kipers.
Here.
Councilmember DeRozier.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And Councilmember Farrar is absent this evening, and the clerk is present. That concludes the roll.
Thank you. That brings us to agenda approval. And they need to be removed or added. Now would be the time, otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
I will go ahead and move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Overholzer and a second by Councilmember Kipers. Any, any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, I would entertain that as well.
And move to excuse Councilmember Farrar tonight.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, and second by Councilmember DeRozier's to excuse Councilmember Farrar. She did reach out well before the meeting to let us know. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to Councilmember Reports. Any Councilmember Reports on meetings attended on the city's behalf?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I do. I went to the mosquito control district meeting. Basically, after a wet spring, it's kind of settled down a little bit. They have their summer staff hired and in the field. And basically, it's the start of budget talks and Budget Committee is going to get together. And then our August meeting, they'll come back and we'll talk about priorities and go from there. So next meeting is August.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? I have a couple. I was not able to attend RTC, so Ridgefield, as is per our rules, did go to the meeting as our alternate. I didn't see anything too extravagant on the agenda, but I will pursue or look at that closer, but I didn't see anything that was super impactful. There, however, there was a pretty impactful CTRAN meeting. Couple of things to report out on that. First one being that the fall service approval did pass, which means current will be starting in Battleground on September 14th. They will be going to the senior center to do a bit of training. There'll be some outreach. That's the July meeting, I believe they're going to be at the senior center. There will be quite a bit of outreach on that new program for those that aren't aware. Every single person on the CTRAN boards, you know, says you're going to be surprised by how much your citizens are going to love this and use this. For those that aren't aware, it's a within the city of Battleground, it will be something that can even, you can use an app, it'll pick you up from your home and take you to a point of service within the city. So very popular service. The youth use it quite a bit. So pretty happy to see that come through. We had a presentation on where they are at in the bridge. It was a pretty informative one. It's obviously recorded, so you're welcome to go take a look at that. I asked a couple of questions and had some confirmations and learned some things. One being that I know there's a lot of discussion and obviously nobody up here nor, nor that committee sets, sets this decision, but the toll situation, and there's been a lot of talk about tolls. However, the current administration's Secretary of Transportation actually put out a memo quite a bit ago, basically saying if you're getting federal funds, you're going to have user fees. That's AKA tolls. So I don't see that issue being resolved with the current administration. So just something to be aware of. No, no opinion on my part on that. Just, just passing that along that they're kind of, like many things with that bridge, they're pretty constrained by a lot of different parameters. The O and M, which is the big item in the room, that is how much will CTRAN potentially, or another group, pay for Trimate to service Vancouver with light rail? Those calculations are now ongoing and being worked. So we don't know what that number is yet, but it is being worked. And once that number is presented, then the CTRAN board will take up that issue. So at this point, however, there is not a number for what that O and M is. Did confirm that CTRAN will get credit for the bus service that goes into Portland. So it's basically a ledger. If CTRAN's servicing Portland, basically Trimate's paying for that O and M. If light rail comes into Washington, somebody potentially would be paying for that. And I don't want to say CTRAN, but just whoever would be paying for that. So that's basically the ledger, and they'll work that out amongst themselves. I believe they have a third-party auditor involved in that as well. So, and the other big learning was Greg Johnson, the IBR Administrator, described the bridge and the auxiliary lanes, which I don't believe have been completely decided on how many, but it's either one or two. And those auxiliary lanes service only the new overpasses are the redone overpasses. There are no new overpasses. That is 70% of the traffic goes over the bridge. So those two lanes alone will service 70% of the traffic over the bridge, plus they still have the three through lanes. So that was really informed, that really informed me as far as you, you hear the talking point that there's no, no through lanes, no more traffic going to be going over that bridge. Well, if you have two lane service seeing people that are getting in and on and off, I, I could see the benefit for potentially traffic flow on that. So not that I took any civil engineering, so don't, don't hold me to account on that. So it was just very informative. CTRAN is recorded on CVTV, so recommend anybody interested to go ahead and listen to that. I think that's it for CTRAN. Sorry for the long report. Last meeting, we had a recognition of the Greater Vancouver Chamber Civic B. And wanted to, we did miss one. Collee was a finalist. His project was on traffic. Where was it? Traffic alleviation. So a pretty timely topic and just sorry that we misrecognition there. I wanted to make sure that everybody's recognized for the great work of that Vancouver Chamber Civic B. All right, next up, we have a proclamation. And so it's my pleasure to proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month. Jessica Cole's here tonight to receive the proclamation award. Proclamations are not statement of policy, but a means by which a city can recognize an event, group, or individual. Proclamations can be issued at the direction of the mayor. Excuse me. It may be for organizations, individuals, or businesses within or outside battleground jurisdictions. Individual council members will not issue proclamations. A request for proclamation should be directed to the mayor or the city clerk. So thank you, Jessica. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation now. Whereas on June 28th, 1969, the Stonewall uprising marked a turning point in the fight for LGBTQ rights, catalyzing a national movement towards equality and justice. The term queer once used as slur has since been widely reclaimed by the queer community as an umbrella for diverse identities related to gender, romantic orientation, and sexuality, now used with pride and empowerment. And whereas the month of June is recognized as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer, Pride Month commemorating the Stonewall uprising and the progress made in securing civil rights and basic protections for queer individuals. And whereas Battleground is home to a continually growing and vibrant queer community, enriched and supported by inclusive organizations, businesses, and engaged community members. And whereas despite progress, LGBTQ individuals still face discrimination, harassment, and threats to their safety. Pride Month is a vital opportunity to stand firmly against hate and violence and reaffirm our shared commitment to inclusion, dignity, and equal rights for all, especially for queer people who are also people of color, disabled, immigrants, or members of historically marginalized and vulnerable communities who face additional barriers to safety and belonging. And whereas Battleground honors and acknowledges the diversity, contributions, and existence of its queer community members, recognizing that diversity, inclusion, and equity are cornerstones of the citizens, cities, strength, and beauty. And whereas the city of Battleground has previously recognized, recognized and uplifted the queer community through proclamations and community efforts, and is essential that we continue to build on that foundation of respect and visibility. And whereas fostering a culture of belonging where all members of our community, including queer people, feel safe, valued, and included, requires intentional action, increased visibility, and unwavering respect for people of all romantic and sexual orientations, gender identities, and expressions. Now therefore, I Troy McCoy, Mayor of the city of Battleground, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Battleground and Washington, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month. And Jessica, if you wanted to say a few words?
Uh, could we take a photo first? Do you mind? Is that? Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Jessica Cole, and I'm here on behalf of Evote Cascadia, a local nonprofit committed to elevating underrepresented communities through education, advocacy, and celebration, including right here in Battleground. This proclamation affirms that the work and the community, oh, yeah, the work and the community that it serves. If anyone would like to be part of what's ahead, we'd love to have them join us. Thank you so much, Mayor McCoy, for issuing this Pride proclamation and for taking the step towards acknowledging and affirming the LGBTQ plus community here in Battleground. And thank you to the many queer folks and allies who have worked so hard to make this moment possible. Thank you to everyone who showed up tonight, whether you're here in person or supporting from home. Your presence and solidarity mean more than you know. I want to sincerely thank councilmembers McCoy, Bowman, and DeRozier's for consistently supporting a Pride proclamation. I also want to thank these three, along with Councilmember Kipers, for voting to retain the mayor's ability to issue proclamations and for removing the harmful clause that allowed a minority of the council to block them based on subjective claims of controversy. And while I didn't agree with Councilmember Overholzer's original intent, raising the issue of proclamations did open the door for correcting a broken process. Sometimes it takes progress. It sometimes progress takes an unexpected path, and I'm grateful this one led to a better, more inclusive outcome. And let's be honest, this proclamation did not come easy or without resistance. Over the past year, there were real efforts to shut down this kind of recognition altogether. It followed statements suggesting that queer lives and identities were too controversial for even a symbolic acknowledgement. The hostility, chaos, and misinformation that overtook last year's council meeting made one thing clear: leadership was needed. It was the council's responsibility to stand up for members of our community who have been historically excluded and to model that respect and kindness, what that respect and kindness look like, even in disagreement. Moments like this matter because the consequences of hostility are real. Almost exactly six years ago, Nikki Koonhausen, a teenage trans girl from right here in Clark County, was murdered just down the road simply for being herself. Visibility and affirmation are not just symbolic. They help build a world where tragedies like that are less likely to happen again. It's unfortunate that a small group on the council led to a failure in leadership last year. But tonight, I'm incredibly grateful that the mayor is once again able to issue this proclamation. It's a meaningful step forward and a sign that our city is capable of growth. This proclamation may seem small to some, but to those who have felt unseen or unwelcome in Battleground, it means everything. It says clearly, you belong here. You are worthy of respect. It's a moment of recognition that so many have waited a long time to see themselves reflected in this space again. But the community didn't give up. Queer people are still here, and so are their allies. We showed up, we spoke out, and we supported each other because we believe Battleground can be a place that embraces everyone, a place that truly belongs to all of us. This proclamation is a win, not just for the LGBTQIA+ community, but for visibility, inclusion, and the kind of future we want to build here. One where dignity, diversity, and respect are not political, they are foundational. So tonight we celebrate, not because the work is done, but because progress deserves to be honored, and tomorrow we keep showing up. Thank you again, and thank you to every person who made their voice heard to help make this moment possible. We see you, we're proud of you, and we're just getting started.
Thank you, Jessica. All I know is if I'm ever wronged, I want Jessica in my corner. She is a, she's a bulldog. That ends the proclamation portion of the meeting. Do we have any presentations? I don't have any on my agenda, no late additions? Okay, that brings us to Citizens Communications. We do have some people signed up, so I'll go through the spiel. We'll open the meeting for Citizens Communications. Individuals are limited to three minutes. It's an opportunity here for members of the public and limited public forum. Please stick to your time. Please refrain from derogatory remarks, personal attacks, campaign speeches, and please also applause. Although the city desires, city council desires to allow public comment, the city's business must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. Please direct your comments to the mayor. The council may not be able to respond to individual comments. We may refer you to a staff member for assistance. The city manager has placed her cards on right there where the clerks are. That's also where you should take any handouts that you have. Give them to the clerks, please. Thank you for your understanding and participating. So with that, do we have anybody on Zoom? No? Can I say no? That's voting.
No, Mr. Mayor.
So I'll go ahead. We'll start off with Win Gersich.
Mr. Mayor, we are having an issue with our timer.
I can do an audible one if we like. Oh, we're good? All right, well, let's go ahead. All right. Whenever you're ready, we'll start your timer.
Hi, my name is Win Gersich, and I came here tonight and gave you all why fluoride is toxic. And this is written by Dr. Russell Blalock. And he, he's a brain surgeon, and you need to read it because I know you're going to have a, a meeting, I think, on the 21st next month. Is that right? Well, I'm glad that the mayor read this book, didn't he? Because he can all tell you that this book has the entire history of fluoride and how DuPont was sued during the making of the atom bomb. The reason we have fluoride in our water is the fact that our government, when they made the atom bomb, they mixed fluoride and they enriched it with uranium. And they had these gases coming out of all these places that did this, and the crops failed, animals were crawling on their belly, people were sick. The people who worked in these smelters and stuff were violently sick. They died. It causes cancer. Number one thing, it causes cancer. And they knew it. And what they did in Oak Ridge, they actually got black men to work shoveling this yellow cake to make the, the atom bomb. And they picked people with really dark skin because if anybody had light skin, they couldn't work there because you could see what it would do to their skin. They had rashes and stuff on it. Very racist. But I'm telling you this is that my father lived in Denora, Pennsylvania. He worked in the steel industry where Mellon owned it. And what Mellon did was they paid Keetering Laboratories to cover up the fluoride leak because they had the cool air layer over the top. There's a whole chapter on Denora, Pennsylvania, and I still have a cousin that lives there. So maybe next month I'll, I'll have her call in and tell you what they did to him. Because she was born during there, and they checked the people who lived there from the air pollution. This is air pollution all the time to see what it did to their babies. And my cousins have birth defects because of breathing that crap that you put in the water. No joke. And they, they constantly, you know, they were checking everybody's health issues. My one cousin has heart issues. She's got webbed toes, all kinds of weird stuff. And thyroid. Everybody's got thyroid problems. I went back there in the seventies and I couldn't believe, you know, everybody was fat. And I thought, why are all these people fat back there? Because their thyroid was destroyed from the poison that was in the ground and in the air. And I suggested everybody in this city, read this book. It also comes in audible because when you read it, you're going to find that you don't want this garbage in the water. And also too, there's other things that, that are doing with fluoride is that it, it enhances aluminum toxicity. So when you have their spraying chemtrails with aluminum, strontium barium, mercury, lead, and graphene. That, I told you about that. That was on brighteon.com. So when we're breathing all of this stuff and you're drinking fluoride, it takes the aluminum to the brain, and that's why more people have Alzheimer's. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, John Polos.
Here, Mayor and council. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I'm John Polos, 55 years in Battleground. I'm going to solve three of your problems of issues you've been dealing with. I can't solve all of them, but I'm going to give you some input on it. I do this because I am trained to do it. I graduated in structural engineering, civil engineering. I'm a registered civil engineer, state of Washington and other states. I'm going to be talking on three issues: the Interstate 5 bridge replacement, the Columbia River crossing, and light rail. I have, not going to present all the facts tonight, but I have two engineering studies stamped by a professional engineer covering what I'm going to talk about. I studied engineering under Tom McKenzie, the Frank Lloyd Wright of structural engineering and bridge design. Some of you might not know him. But he's well-known in the engineering community. The three oldest types of bridges are the parabolic arch, which would be like the Fremont Bridge, the post and beam, which would be the Glen Jackson I-205 Bridge, and the truss or railroad bridge, which is the Interstate 5 Bridge, and most of the bridges going across the Willamette River. It's the most efficient of the three because it uses less materials. That's what engineering was about. It's based on the triangle. You call it the railroad bridge, I call it the truss bridge. Okay. So I did a study of the I-5 Bridge. It's 110 years old. I wrote this report four years ago. I found it to be a very sound bridge. It could, there's a lot of debate whether it's going to last, could last 50 or 100 more years with proper maintenance. We've got a lot of structures based on trusses that are way older than that. So my recommendation is do not tear down the I-5 Bridge. I know this is not what you want to hear. So that's in this study here. I can give you more information in a private meeting. Secondly, I don't have an engineering study to support it, but light rail, to me, doesn't sound like a real good idea for two reasons. How much is it going to be used to come in, and how much does it cost? And I think the citizens have already voted on it. Am I correct on whether they want light rail in Clark County? I'm not certain, but I heard that. Does anybody know? Doesn't matter. Tell me later. Thirdly, I'm going to talk about the I-205 crossing. And everybody that wants to build a third bridge wants to build it in Camas because the 205 Bridge is loaded up. I'm going to recommend what some other engineers came up with. And it is an eight-lane bridge going from Ridgefield to Scappus, high-rise, and doesn't cross into any property belonging to the city of Vancouver or the city of Portland. So it doesn't impact those two major cities.
Thank you, John.
What it does do is as soon as it gets built, and eventually it will, proposal is to tie in at Wilsonville to I-5.
That, that's your time, sir.
I'm done. Okay. Thank you very much. I'm happy to present more in a private meeting.
Yeah, reach out. Next up, we have Simon. Be comfortable coming up, Simon.
Hello, I'm a resident of Battleground. Firstly, thank you, Mayor McCoy, for stating this proclamation. It means so much. Even if some people criticize you for it, you did the right thing for your residents, and that matters. Truly thank you. It was devastating to see Victoria, Tricia, and Eric vote against such a simple act of recognition last year. They didn't even have to vote. They could have let it pass like so many others they didn't question, including one for the police, which could also be considered potentially controversial. But instead, they chose to make a statement that made it clear that people like me are not welcome here, and that was not okay. Then last month, they doubled down by voting to eliminate proclamations altogether. They chose oppression over inclusion again. Last year, I came prepared to speak, but I was too terrified. The room was filled with people saying cruel, untrue things about people like me. Things rooted in fear, not truth. I stayed silent because even those claiming to speak from the love of God made it clear I wasn't safe. The message was loud. I didn't belong, but I was there. I showed up even if I couldn't speak, and I'm here again because I haven't forgotten what it felt like to stay quiet. I'm speaking now for myself and for others in my community who are just as scared because this matters. No one should feel unsafe or unwanted just for existing, not in their own home and not in a room full of people who were elected to represent everyone. I'm not a political statement or some abstract idea. I'm a real person. I live here. I contribute, I contribute to this community, just like anyone else. And yet I don't get to move through this town without fear. I have to think about my safety in ways most people never have to because the risks for people like me are real. That's not fairness. That is survival. This proclamation says that queer people, people you see every day, whether you realize it or not, deserve to be seen, valued, and protected in this community. There's a reason queer people are a legally protected class because we've been targeted simply for existing. This isn't about politics. It's about people. It's about me. About the queer kids and adults, and adults who deserve safety and dignity, just like all of you. You were elected to represent all of us, including the people who are different from you, including me, including everyone. And when you refuse to acknowledge us, And when you refuse to acknowledge us, when you treat us like we're too controversial to be seen, you're not just failing to lead, you're harming the very people you swore to serve. I want this proclamation. I need it. And I will not be made to feel invisible in my own home. So thank you again for stating this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Next up, Edie, and I apologize if I mispronounced that last, or that name. You can stand, yeah, we just moved the microphone up, whatever's more comfortable for you.
You got it, it's Edie.
Oh, yeah, one for me.
My name is Edie Lemagne. And although my accent broadcasts my Mississippi roots, I live in Battleground. I am heterosexual, cisgender woman. And I am very proud ally and fierce supporter of the LGBTQ plus community. And I'm incredibly honored to be called anti by quite a few people within that community. According to a 2023 survey by the Trevor Project, 18% of LGBTQ youth have attempted suicide, a rate twice as high as that of non-LGBTQ youth. I can't imagine any parent in their right mind who would be okay with any teen suicide ideation rate regardless of who they are. Trevor Project also reported that LGBTQ teens are three times as likely to report not feeling safe on their campuses. It's important and relevant to know that I have been married to my husband for 33 years. It may shock some of the younger folks here to know that occasionally I still slip my hand in his or steal a quick kiss in public. The difference between us and people within the LGBTQ plus community is that no one has ever harassed us for it. No one tells us not to shove it down their throats. No one throws things at us. No one physically assaults us. It is because of the simple fact that we are straight that we're able to publicly display affection for one another without fear of assault. And let's face it, who would feel safe to hold their partner's hand in public in a society where just two weeks ago, actor Jonathan Joss's home was burned to the ground and he was murdered by his own neighbors just for being gay? It breaks my heart to know that there are people who don't feel safe simply because of who they love. The School Social Work Journal published studies showing a significant drop in harassment and suicide ideation where there are gay alliance groups. Support equals safety. Support equals safety. An official proclamation absolutely matters. It tells our LGBTQ plus community, you are safe, you are loved, and we will protect you from harm. In John 13:34 through 35, Jesus said, "A new command I give you. Love one another. As I have loved you, so you must love one another. By this, everyone will know that you are my disciples if you love one another." There were no exceptions there. The LGBTQ plus community is worthy of our love. They are worthy of dignity and respect, just like the rest of us. I fully support the Pride proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Edie. Next up, Fia.
Heyo. Representation for our community is more important now than ever. Trans folk like myself, trans youth, we're under attack all over the country and kind of all over the world right now. Our history has been erased by Nazi Germany as one of the first book burnings. And we see the same thing happening today with our current administration. These aren't coincidences. These are calculated decisions and calculated legislator meant to demonize, demoralize, and dehumanize us. But we survived. We survived Nazis, even due to decades of medical research, being destroyed. And we're gonna survive this round two. We won't stay silent any longer. We will not roll over easy. We as a people will no longer remain palatable and kind in the face of oppression. Those days are gone. We are pushing back. We aren't throwing in the towel, we're gonna start throwing hands. We aren't giving up any more ground, we are standing our ground. I owe it to those who came before us, those are here with us, and those who decide to come after us, as well as my children, foster children, partner, my comrades, and anyone who is afraid to speak up and speak out about who they really are. It's a shame that Farrar written here tonight. I'm sure it's a total coincidence, she was unable to attend. But I do hope that she hears when we say we aren't a controversy nor a political identity. We're your teachers, we're your doctors, we're your home builders, your lawmakers, and we're your neighbors. We build communities up, we do not tear them down. We are Jewish, Christian, Muslim, agnostic, atheist. We're Democrats, Republicans. Some of us are dirty commies, socialists, independents, anarchists. We're not some singular monolith. We're individuals as different and diverse as straight cis folk. We just have better fashion sense and dance better. So maybe put aside some ill-formed prejudice, talk to us. Maybe you'll learn how to live a life a little bit more honestly and maybe you'll have just a little bit more fun on your way to the grave.
Thank you, Fia. Next up, Ally.
That just made me chuckle. I didn't prepare anything, I just wanna say thank you. I was in Vancouver this weekend doing all the things. There were so many, so many celebrations in Vancouver and it was so great to start off at Juneteenth, have lunch at the market, go down to the protest, and then finish off our day at the Pride Block Party. Whether you are represented in the LGBTQIA+ community or you're an ally or you're just another community member, this stuff matters. It helps us celebrate each other. It celebrates life and love. And to be a part of that celebration of that and part of that community, that building of community in celebration, it was incredible. And I am so glad that we were able to complete that full circle tonight by having the proclamation here tonight to bring that, that same feeling of why that matters here in Battleground, not just outside of this area. It needs to happen here too because we all live here as well. We shouldn't have to leave this community to feel safe. And tonight, there's a bigger step towards feeling safe in our own community and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ally. Next up, David Terry.
David Terry, I'm a Battleground resident. Thanks again to the mayor, as everybody said. And I wanted to welcome all of the Pride community here, prideful friends, literally my neighbors, and say how I'm proud I am of them coming and how it makes our city better through diversity. So I hope we can all welcome these folks and let them do their thing and make us all better. So thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have any comments tonight? No late signups? Okay. With that, we'll close the citizens' comments portion of the meeting and we'll move on to consent agenda. Council? Thank you. Second. I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Bowman, second by Councilmember Overholzer to approve the consent agenda as presented. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Brings us to public hearings. Mark, did you want to give a brief description quick before we open that up?
Yeah, tonight, we're gonna have the public hearing for the six-year TIP. I presented at the two meetings ago. The only changes from that are deleting the two projects that we talked about because they'll be out to bid and under construction this year and then made some minor changes to some math errors and things like that. Otherwise, it's the same that was presented and recommend we have a public hearing and then adopt the TIP.
Any questions for Mark before I move on? Okay. Do we have any written testimony for the public hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So I will now open the public hearing at 7:38 PM. For public testimony, individuals limited three minutes provide comment on Resolution 25-06, adopting the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan for 2026 through 2031. Please direct your comments to the mayor. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and public, now is your chance to... Please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Philip Johnson. You have spent, the city spent $300,000 this last year on Old Town trying to figure out how to work it better. I have a couple of clues for you. Working on the Parkway intersection in Main Street would go a long ways. And then trying to finish out Grace Avenue. There are eight businesses on Grace Avenue and two residences. I own one of those residences and the city wants some of my property. We've been at this now for 13 years. 13 years ago, there wasn't enough money to buy anything. So it's been put off. It's been put off. And here we are. Four years ago, I received a letter from an outfit in Salem wanting permission to walk across my property for measurement, I assume. And that is the last I've heard from the city. As I've talked to the other businesses across the street from me and across Maine, they haven't heard a thing either. So I'm asking the city, either tell us what you're going to do or let us go. Some of these businesses are holding on, waiting on the city to act. I've held on for 13 years. And I hear nothing. So I'm asking the city tonight, next week, whenever, to tell us, the eight businesses and the two residences, what your plan is and why it's taken 13 years to correct this intersection. It is dangerous for those of us that walk. You turn your head four ways and by the time you turn the fourth way, you have to turn back to the first way to try to make sure not to get run over. So I see it's first on the list. It should be first on your list. And I hope at some point the city acts on this. Or at least tells the rest of us that we're free to do with, not to hold on for the city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, with that, seeing no further members of the public wishing to speak, and now close the public hearing at 7:41 PM. Council, what's your... We have some questions or discussion on the motion, on the resolution? Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark, where are we with the property acquisition out there now?
So the, when you do at NEPA, there's four signatures on it. We've got three. The last sign off will be federal highways. That's supposed to happen anytime. Once that happens, we can move forward with the right-of-way phase. And so then we'll start doing appraisals and the whole rigmarole of that.
Have we talked at all to the paint building? Because RADA is out of there right now and it's completely empty.
We've done some early stuff with them. There's part of it with them is there'll be relocation because it's a full take. So we've done some of that.
They've already relocated.
And what's that? Yeah, they've relocated, so.
I just worry about someone else moving in because we have been at this a long time. And if someone else moves in there, then we're moving someone else when we come in, in six months and hopefully less. And tell them we gotta buy that building. So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I believe the Parkway and Main signal is this summer as well?
The rest of the design will get finished up this summer and then I'll go next year.
Oh, construction next year?
Yeah.
I second that.
Councilmember Davis? Go ahead. Oh, you buzzed. Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, we can do discussion, it's fine. Yep, always. Yeah, those are ongoing. I don't know where it's gonna end up, to be fair. I just know that those discussions are ongoing between the city and the school district. Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution 25-06, adopting the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for 2026 through 2031. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. That brings us to the business portion. And Mark, you have something on 503?
Correct.
They have distinguished guests here, so I'm guessing that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I'll invite Carly up before we get started. I've been having trouble with my Zoom, so Kristen's back up in case it goes out, but I won't give it a shot.
I would also note that we, I think Mike Southwick, who was here with you last month, is also online. So if he's possible to sort of be present as well, he's my backdrop for smart talking.
I am here, so if you need me, I'm ready.
Share your title, I'm not.
Absolutely. So I'm Carly Francis, I work for the Washington State Department of Transportation and I am the Southwest Region Administrator, so responsible for the seven counties in southwest Washington.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and get started. So what we wanted to do today is talk a little bit about the 503 corridor. Last few months, we adopted speed limits for both 502 and 503. We spent a lot of that time talking specifically about 502 because state had the data on the road. You know, there's improvements there that justified the speed limit. So we wanted to come back to you and discuss the 503 corridor. So that's what we're gonna do now. We'll talk a little bit about some improvements that are gonna go on on 503. And Carly's gonna talk a little bit about the speed limits. And then I'll talk about some future cross-sections for the road. And then we'll kind of open it up for questions. So as you can see on that first slide, there's several projects coming up, kind of what I would call the central corridor of 503. Development project is working on the intersection at Rasmussen and 503. It will be a roundabout. They just submitted 90% plans to WashDOT about a week ago, I think. So they're moving along with that and getting pretty close to having approval. Up on the north end of that corridor, the city's working on Roundabout at Onstorf. For several years, that intersection's been in concurrency failure. The solution to that is the Roundabout project. And so we just hired her and the process of hiring a designer for that. Probably in the next month or two, you'll see the professional service agreement come to get that design kicked off. And we'll continue to work on getting the construction funding for that project. Kind of in the middle of everything, we've got the Fifth Street project that was mentioned in the TIP portion. Kind of starting off, there'll be a right-in, right-out connection similar to what you have across the way on Fifth Way behind Fred Myers. The long-term thought for that is an additional roundabout, which would provide full access there. So those are kind of the projects that are coming up fairly near term, Rasmussen being the soonest. Onstorf probably being the farthest out. But in a period of, you know, the summer to, you know, four or five years from now, that, that will all be built out. So I'll turn it over to Carly to kind of talk the, what that impacts with speed.
Sure. So just really on the heels of the conversations and the reset of your ordinances around speed, it felt like it was good to come back and talk about 503. So really, these projects that Mark was speaking about will help set that framework, similar to how we were talking about 502 and needing some change in the look and feel of the roadway. So the expectation is that with those brackets of roundabouts, sort of north and south of the 502 intersection, that creates that change in context that will facilitate and support us moving the speed limit down. It is something we do have to do the studies on. We can do those fairly quickly, as you've seen. But that kind of context adjustment is... But that kind of context adjustment is what we're looking for, to be able to do those resets of speeds so that we're not violating people's expectation of the roadway and creating sort of unsafe conditions by posting it lower than what people expect to go. So we really anticipate that those two roundabouts will be really catalysts to being able to facilitate lower speeds in the corridor. So it's a similar conversation. It's not immediate, but wanted to just sort of forecast that expectation and knowing that those two brackets will really help us analyze and expect to be able to reset speed limits.
So long-term for the corridor, when we adopted our most recent transportation plan several years back, part of that included some cross-sections for 503. And so you can kind of see the areas. There's, again, what I kind of call the central area where there's already curb. And it goes from essentially Eaton to Main Street. And then you've got more of the, I'll call a rural section. That would likely be seen on the north and south sides of that. On the slide here, you can see that first one, you know, you'd essentially have on the east side, the shared path. You would get a median outside of the intersection areas. You know, intersection areas would have turn lanes. And then you would have bike and ped facilities on the western half. Once you get outside kind of that core area, you have, you would take away the Jersey barrier, you would have medians. And then you would have the pathway, which currently exists on the south side, but will continue to push forward on the north side. These are the kind of projects that will need to happen to extend that 40 mile-per-hour corridor. Again, like Carly mentioned, having the, these visual cues and smaller lanes. You can see here that on that cross-section, the travel lanes are actually 11 feet. So shrinking that down a little bit makes drivers less comfortable, which slows down speeds, gets you to what you want. So long-term, these are the kind of projects we'll want to see in order to ultimately meet counsel's intent with the 40 mile per hour that was approved in the ordinance. That is most of what I had to say. I think Carly wants to add anything, or Michael, but we can answer questions.
Yeah, I think mostly. I'm happy to answer questions, but also just wanted to come back because we have such an ongoing working relationship with the City of Battleground to work on achieving these outcomes. And so really just pleased to come back and speak about that. It definitely takes a while to work on them to sort of meet those expectations. But really just wanted to demonstrate that that partnership is ongoing and that dialogue is, is rich and we regularly meet, so.
Are you guys able to hear me now?
Happy to answer them. And again, Mike Southwick, who is our Assistant Regional Administrator for Operations and Planning, is on the line. He has better knowledge about all the traffic details than I do at times, so.
Michael, did you want to add something?
Can you guys hear me or no?
We're not picking up your sound, I don't think.
How about now? No.
Yeah, we show you unmuted on our side. I don't know what's going on. Oh, well, they tried to figure out those technical difficulties. Deputy Mayor Bowman, you had a question?
I've got a couple. I'll be nice, I promise. So, so we're gonna put around, well, the, the roundabout at Rasmussen's gonna go in before the roundabout at Onstorf.
Correct.
So are we suggesting that the roundabout at Rasmussen is gonna be a 55 mile an hour roundabout? I would love to see it.
Yeah, so I think that the, I can't speak to the design specifically about the speed there. But as we are designing and developing roundabouts, we do look to slow speeds down as they come into them. That's part of a feature of a roundabout. So there may be sort of a localized calming of traffic as it comes into that. Mostly wanting to be very plain here about the fact that there may be that localized traffic calming at that location, but that it does not support sort of having a longer section of lower speeds around that. So there would likely be more locational markers as opposed to sort of speed limit specific items. So it'd be sort of bringing things down more in the advisory and locational space as opposed to the longitudinal speed limit things that you'll see on roadways.
It's kind of similar to when you're going on a curve and you have the yellow sign that tells you this is the appropriate speed for it. And I think you'll see something like that on the roundabout.
Which, which I, I understand that. I get it. My concern is, and I'll preface the same thing the mayor did, is I'm not an engineer. I drive a lot, though, but I did not stay at a Holiday Inn. So my concern is, is any time, especially in this community, because you can hear it on every single one of our roads, anytime you give people the ability to slow down and then accelerate, I don't care if it's motorcycles, diesel trucks, hot rods, just in general. If you just sit out here on 503 and watch, anytime we give people the opportunity to do that, we have these acceleration zones because everybody's in a hurry to go nowhere. It's amazing to me. And, you know, we're gonna have one at Rasmussen, we're gonna have one at Main that narrows down into a one lane, or two lanes, one in each direction, right? And so, so you have these opportunities for drag strips, is what I'll call them, because that's what they turn into. And, and then the second thing I see, like Onstorf, you said concurrency is, is why that intersection is failing. So I saw in our packet that it was like $3.5 million for that roundabout. So is that the total amount for that roundabout?
I think that was the construction cost, so that's outside of design.
So the question I would ask is, why does the City of Battleground have to be on the line for 100% of something that is probably 60 to 70%, at that intersection, probably 70% or more, a state issue and a county issue? Because those are cars going through here. Those are not cars staying in our city. Because if I, if it's in our city, let us, let us, let us make it painful to live above our city. You know, like, I don't, I've said this a million times. I don't care about anybody that doesn't live inside of our city, what they want to do. I'll slow you down to 10 mile an hour and you can stop and eat because it's gonna take you 30 minutes to get through town. And it benefits our city, right? But, but when, like, that intersection is so much stuff that isn't, have anything to do with the city, but yet we have to spend $3.5 million to, to, to do the intersection. So why is there no, why is the state not helping? And I understand the state has their own constraints or the county or whoever. Why is there not partnerships on these type of things on state roads? I get it if it's Parkway, you know, that's inside the city and there's, you know, 20% of them maybe don't live in the city, but, but it's in the, so can you answer that? Or what's, is it just like, well, we're the little, little brother, we're gonna get punched in the face and pay it?
I, no, I mean, I think it's a tough question. You, you know, for us, we have certain level of service standards for our roads and we apply them even to state facilities. And so, you know, all of our new development kind of triggered that failure. I believe our standard is slightly different than the state's. And so, you know, from the state's perspective, that might not be at concurrency failure. Based on our standards, it is. And then Carly should, I'm sure could talk about two hours on, you know, state funding. And, you know, WashDOT has to look at the state as a whole, just not our region. So they're, they're going after a limited. And I think what I've found from kind of a city perspective is we have the ability to focus on, you know, our priorities and they're not always gonna match the state's, just based on that limited funding pool. And I'll let Carly add.
No, I'm happy to speak to that. I think the, the limitations of funding and the limitations of discretion that WashDOT has for where we can direct funds versus where legislature directs funds is probably the source of your frustration. So, and I would say, one, there is just the lack of preservation and maintenance funding that we're facing. Everybody's facing that. I know I'm not gonna wax poetic about that for very long. But improvement projects, i.e. things where you're changing sort of a location or making improvements that are outside of maybe a safety project. So the Rock Creek Roundabout that we put in, that was a safety-driven project. There are very limited funds for that. It was very targeted. But improvement funds for projects on state facilities are largely designated by legislature. And WashDOT does not have discretion to direct those funds, really almost at all. I have places where I would love to see investment that are critical and important, not to overshadow what you find here, but I've got places where interchange is back up onto the highway and create a stop condition where folks are traveling 55 miles or faster next to them. That's a huge concern for me. It's a place where I would love to direct funds, but I don't have the capacity to direct funds in that way.
I think as we're, and I don't know if we've done this in the past, as we have a legislative committee, we spend time in Olympia, we spend time with our legislators and stuff like that. I think it would be beneficial to have sign-off from you guys saying, we understand, we don't, you're not giving us money to fix this. We understand that, you know, it's, it's coming through these legislators and, and that's, that's what the 502 project was, 502, 503. You know, that, that may be beneficial to us. And I don't know that we've had that in the past where we've had, it was just kind of, sure, we'll support you, but, but no real behind-the-scenes, or not behind-the-scenes, but, but a letter of support that we can give to our legislators. The last thing I'll say is, is I see this as we're, like, in, in my time on this council and probably in my time in the city, I will not see 40 mile an hour on 503. Because Mr. Johnson brought up a project that we've been working on the entire time that I've been on council, which I'm in my 15th year. And that project, I may never see that project on, on council. And, and we have some funding for that project now. It just takes so long to do this. And, and my concern is, is that, you know, there's, I, I guess what I would throw back to you guys then is if, if speed limits can't be lowered, then give us, give us alternatives to help slow this stuff down and, and see what's, you know, the, the, the driving, the, the running the red lights, the, you know, we've looked at, in the past, we've looked at speed cameras. And the state only allows you, you know, we're, we're just, our hands are tied with everything. State says, oh, we only have two speed cameras or red light cameras or other things that we can use that can help correct bad behavior. COVID created a lot of bad behavior. And I don't know what it is. I just think people just think like, you know, what are you gonna do to me, right? We lived through COVID. So how do we correct that bad behavior and having help to figure out how we do that besides planner strips and, you know, speed bumps and, and those type of things? Maybe that's what it is. I don't know. But I just don't see that happening anytime soon.
Back on your, just to set some expectations for letters of support. The department does write letters of support often when folks are seeking grant funding or other activities. The department does not engage in sort of that direct lobbying, oftentimes on behalf of individuals, although I know that there's the conversation that happens across Clark County every year to set a set of legislative priorities. I abstain from that vote at RTC, just because it's not my space. But there are those opportunities that are out there. And so when you're seeking grant funding or those other types of opportunities, there is the opportunity to ask for support letters.
That's what helped us big time on 502, was, was having, I, I hated it because we were asking for money from the state to fix state projects when I thought $7.5 million within the city on our own stuff would have been great. But, but having that letter of support, just saying, hey, you know, we think this is, this is a good project. Let us go beg for the money, because, you know, we're good at that and somewhat good. But, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from there. I appreciate it, though. I think it would be a big deal to look at those projects and, and so that we're not battle, when, when our legislators look at it, we're not hearing, well, the state would rather do this. And we're over here trying to do something different.
Sure. And I, given the amount of financial constraints, I at times will speak plainly about places where I have other priorities, which is not to speak ill of Battleground. It is just to recognize some safety problems that we have that are highly concerning to me with our priority on safety.
Thank you.
Uh, so one thing I noticed on that graphic was we're slowing down right at Rasmussen. If that roundabout goes into 40 was the recommendation, correct?
I would, I would note that there would be a discussion about exactly where, this is sort of, this is a conceptual graphic, looking forward and saying, you folks have a target on 503, so there will be a, one, you'll have curbing coming into the roundabout. There'll be warnings, like all those types of.
Yeah, it, it would likely be before the roundabout. That was just a.
Well, I get, and I want to go further than that because if you've spent any time in, in this city driving 503, that 503 Eaton intersection, which is currently in failure, which I know we have on the map to hopefully get some RTC money to fix that. And then we have, we've added a stoplight in the last, I don't know how long ago it was, at 189. And I, I just think that, I think we need to push the envelope a little bit there and look farther south. It's, I mean, I about got T-boned coming into the council meeting today. The speeds that are happening on those two highways are, are not safe exiting a city street onto them, even at, even at a stoplight. So I'm in full support of whatever we can do to lengthen that lowering of speed limit down there. So as the deputy mayor said, I would be very interested in what are your suggestions? What are those projects? How, how do we go continuing this partnership? Because I'll, I'll admit, it's, it's been great. Your staff has been responsive. I really appreciate you coming out here. I know how busy you are. So I don't, so I really appreciate you being out here. And I'm just, hopefully that conversation continues and those suggestions keep coming to us.
Something we can definitely pay attention to as we're looking to implement things and see whether or not there's lane narrowing or other things. So certainly good to flag now. It's part of why, as we were talking and thought from last month, is just, we should come back and talk about 503 now so that we can gather ideas and think about them as we move forward.
Awesome. Counsel?
Thank you again for coming out. Yeah, I still am having a hard time wrapping my brain around that we have a 55 mile an hour highway going across our 25 mile an hour Main Street. That, to me, just seems preposterous. But aside from that, I agree with the communication we have here as far as lowering that speed limit on either side of the roundabouts. I love that idea. Maybe even to the mayor's point, going south, but maybe even a little farther north. We have lights on both sides of, north of Onstorf and, and south of Eaton that kind of give us a little buffer zone there to slow down a little bit. But it's, there's a tremendous amount of dangerous driving that goes on, on that road right now. So that just has me a little concerned. That's all I have.
Counselmember Coopers?
Yeah, I just want to kind of add on to that, too, just concerns around 503 going north. Again, on, on your diagram, it was, you know, kind of targeting, again, I understand it's kind of a draft, but showing that we'd be back to 50, 55 after the roundabout at Onstorf. And we've got one more street up there with the light. And so we've got to extend that out. I live in that area and just that light alone is a problem. So there's no turning lanes and the amount of traffic is just increasing up there. And I know we've got about 180 homes going in behind us, so there we go. Thank you. Appreciate the work.
Yeah, we all good? All right. Well, thank you so much, Carly, for coming out.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Appreciate, sorry for the muting Michael this whole time, but.
All right. I think I, I think I managed it.
Mayor, I like, just to, a point to Deputy Mayor Bowman's bringing up, the WashDOT has been a great partner. And as a matter of fact, when it comes to support, I think Carly provided us a letter of support for a federal legislative ask for our downtown revitalization construction. So I think they do support us in ways that we probably are unaware of. So thank you, Carly.
Okay, that concludes the business portion of the evening. Do we have any administrative reports? No?
Sorry, that's me. Just reminder that our next meeting is July 21st. We don't have a meeting in the first part of July. It will encompass the study session. We had a great ribbon cutting today at the senior center. It's not quite finished, but it will be ready for occupancy before July 1, when the seniors want to come back. And lastly, I sent an email to the AWC attendees. Should have received one from me with a couple reminders. So if you have any questions, let me know. That's it. That concludes my report.
Okay, moving on to council communication. Okay, moving on to council communications. Councilmember Rochers?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on something from our workshop. Um, we talked about the cost of replacing some of our major roadways and one of the steps was to have a geotechnical study. So I just wanted to check in and make sure that that is in the works, that that was communicated, that we wanted to do that and we don't need to do anything further.
Yeah, that I think kind of only follow up to that as I know Megan's working ultimately on a budget adjustment. So you'll see the, you know, final blessing of it in there. But, um, yeah, we're happy to move forward with that to get that, at least that piece of the wall rolling.
Awesome. I look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Overholzer?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, publicly state that, uh, we have a July third Battleground Independence Day celebration coming up, uh, here in the city. And, uh, that'll be happening at Maddox Industrial Transformer on, uh, July third from six to ten thirty P M. Uh, we are praying that we don't have a burn ban so we can actually have our fireworks. Uh, the, uh, there's a website, uh, BGjulythree.org. That's, uh, BGjulythree.org. Um, everyone is welcome to attend. There'll be food trucks, uh, kids crafts, kids parade, bounce house games and more. You may even see a council member or two dunked in the tank. So, uh, that might be for your viewing pleasure for all the citizens out there. Uh, you guys are welcome to come on down and be free hot dogs and all kinds of great things. So that's it.
Yeah, great public celebration and a lot of free stuff. Um, Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Thank you, Miss Mayor. Since we don't have a meeting in the first part of July, just, uh, for Harvest Days, um, coming up, would love to see all you at Harvest Days. I know, uh, there's, I don't know if we're doing a parade entrance or not, but we are, okay. Um, well, if, if you guys, uh, want to help out at all, get ahold of Councilmember Overholzer. He's in charge of all the volunteers now, which is nice. Um, appreciate that. But, um, it'll start Friday night and, uh, we're keeping our fingers crossed for our fireworks because I'm pretty sure there'll be a burn ban by then, but, uh, we'll see, we'll see what happens. But, um, yeah, Harvest Days will be before our next meeting. So love to see everyone out. Thank the city for the help and the work that you guys are putting in for that to make that a good event. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, with that, as has been mentioned, there's no meeting on July seventh. Uh, we do have a study session at six P M. on Monday, July twenty first, starting, starting at six with the regular meeting following at seven. Uh, and then the review committee's meeting for, quickly after this for thirty minutes to get that going. So with that, this meeting, it's eight eleven. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.